The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, June 13th, 2017. The time is 6:00 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbridled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. We come to you tonight, Heavenly Father Jesus, Creator of all things, and we thank you. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon this city. We come to you with praise and thanksgiving on our heart because Heavenly Father Jesus, we know that you have everything under control. We know Heavenly Father Jesus, that you've placed these leaders in the position that they're in. And Heavenly Father Jesus, your word tells us that we are to pray for them, uplift them, and stand behind them. Tonight, Heavenly Father, we just ask that you give them the wisdom and the courage, Heavenly Father, that they will need to make the decisions that best suits this city, this body, and the people that work and live here. We ask a blessing upon it. We ask a blessing upon the staff, each and every one. And Heavenly Father Jesus, we ask that you bless this great United States of America that you've given to us and that we might keep it safe. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell?
Here.
Council Authority Member District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Council Authority Member District 2 Cindy Fossey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Leanne Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien?
Here. There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Conflict of interest. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time.
I have a conflict with item 3E on the consent calendar.
I have a conflict with item CE-3E also.
I have a conflict of interest on item 3E. So at this time?
We will go ahead and draw coins and the member with the highest number will stay to be part of the quorum, to vote.
I'm lucky thirteen.
You're higher than me. I'm five.
I have seven.
All right. You get to stay. You get to conduct the meeting when we leave.
I have mayor duty.
All right. Any other conflicts of interest? Seeing none, we're going to proceed with presentations, starting with proclamation. Disability Awareness Month for June 2017. And Ms. Boucher, would you please join in?
This is Marcy Boucher, the Executive Director of Society for Disabilities, and should be accepting the proclamation. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Disability Awareness Month, June 2017. Whereas the City Council of the City of Riverbank has recognized healthy community as a priority, and whereas disabilities can affect all people regardless of race, age, gender, or social status, and the essence of life is not embodied by physical or mental perfection, but is an integral part of human spirit. And whereas increasing public awareness about diverse abilities is vital to fighting the stigma and discrimination that often serve as a barrier to employment, socialization, and individual well-being. And whereas there is an estimated four million, 158,400 people with disabilities in the state of California, and over 71,640 people over the age of five with disabilities in Stanislaus County. Whereas within the next year, at least one out of eight Californians will experience disabilities personally or through a family member. And whereas the City of Riverbank wants to celebrate and recognize people with different abilities. Whereas people with different abilities are independent, productive, and part of the community. Whereas education, understanding, access engagement, relationships are important components of a connected, livable, and healthy community. Whereas communities thrive when residents appreciate the unique gifts inside people of all abilities. By developing relationships within our neighbors, we make our community a place where everyone participates and is a valued member. And whereas the Society for Disabilities will commemorate June 2017 and each June thereafter as Disability Awareness Month. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Riverbank that June 2017 is Disability Awareness Month within the City of Riverbank, and we urge all of our citizens to become aware of the needs and capabilities of persons with disabilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You got it?
Got it.
All right, go ahead.
Okay. All right, thank you. We've been, we started this back in 2011, and Mayor O'Brien actually was the one who helped me get this started. And the City of Riverbank was the first city to jump on board and help us. And Richard was actually able to help me get it declared June Disability Awareness Month in California last year. So he, so thank you very much for that, Richard. One of the biggest concerns that I receive across my desk is accessibility issues within the community. One story that sticks out clearly in my head was a gentleman who tried to go to, or who took his child to a park here in the community. And we always think about making parks accessible for the children, but it's not only that, but it's also for the family members. And his child was acting up on the slide, and because he was in a wheelchair, he couldn't go onto the sand and get his own child down from the slide. So he had to ask a stranger to go up there and get his child and bring him back to him. He said he never had felt so just vulnerable in his entire life. So just as you guys are creating your development plans and planning for the City of Riverbank, I just would ask you guys to remember this population as you do so. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Item two, public comment. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Do we have any public comment? Please approach to the podium. State your name.
Hi, my name is Tony Hagerton. I, some time ago, I, I saw you guys' last broadcast, and anyway, yes. Yeah, I know something about, something about marijuana and stuff. Oh, I just want to say, I don't think that's a good idea at all and stuff, especially, especially what's happening in some places like Arizona where people, where families get kidnapped by drug dealers and stuff. I just don't think we need any type of marijuana thing, you know. It's not a good idea, at least, I don't think so. My thanks.
Any further public comment? See it?
Oops. I live right down the street. I, I have kind of a request, sort of statement. Obviously, I live on this street, and the traffic coming from Fourth Street through here, especially at night, I know, like I said, I live downtown, so I see it all the time. This might as well just have slow signs on it. At night, cameras are not, people just go right through there. But I have three dogs, three grandkids, and I take them across the street over by Karen's to do their deal. And matter of fact, Chief Kylie was over at Karen's the other day and actually witnessed that. So what I'm requesting is some sort of speed bump, or, you know, the thing where you hit the button and it lights up, something like that. It goes all the way down to the skate park, basically. Speaking of that, that's another thing. I witnessed a young man get a ticket on a skateboard. I think there, the RMC code 103.3, I get it, and I'm everything. However, I feel that if there's some way to revise that. For example, if you are having fun and you're skateboarding recreationally or bicycle riding recreationally out in front of somebody's business, basically loitering, I think that should be held up. However, if you're commuting, like my son does, he's 20 years old, he actually works for the city, and he commutes to work on a skateboard. There's no bike lanes down here. So I think that in some way or another, that that code should be revised. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment? Thank you. Proceed to item three, Consent Calendar, consisting of item 3A, wave readings; item 3B, approval of the May 9th, 2017, City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Minutes. Item 3C, consideration of a resolution authorizing the City Manager to sign a First Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement with the Novo Planning Group for the subconsultant services associated with the Crossroads West Pacific Land Project. Item 3D, Resolution Consolidated Landscape and Lighting District. Resolutions of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Consolidated Lighting, Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. And a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminarily approval of the annual levy report for the Consolidated Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Item 3E will be addressed separately. 3F, Resolutions, Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 2006-01 Heartlands. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank. County of Stanislaus, State of California declaring its intention to levy and collect annual assessments within the Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 2006-01 Heartlands for fiscal years 2017-2018. Item 3G, A Resolution, Ridge Wood Place Landscape and Lighting District. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Ridge Wood Place Landscape and Lighting District for the fiscal year 2017-2018. A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Ridge Wood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. And a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for the preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Ridge Wood Place Landscape and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Item 3H, Resolutions. River Cove Landscape and Lighting District. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Landscape and Lighting District Number 1, River Cove Subdivision, for fiscal year 2017-2018. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for Landscape and Lighting District Number 1, River Cove Subdivision, for fiscal year 2017-2018. Three, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for the preliminary approval of the annual levy reports of the Landscape and Lighting District Number 1, River Cove Subdivision, for fiscal year 2017-2018. Item 3I, Resolution. Sierra Vista Estates Landscape and Lighting District. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Two, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal years 2017-2018. Item three, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy of, levy report for the Sierra Vista Estates Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Item 3J, Resolution. Riverbank Storm Drain Maintenance District Number 05-01 Sterling Ridge. The Resolution of the City of Riverbank, California Council ordering the levy and collection of assessments within Riverbank Storm Drain District Number 05-01 Sterling Ridge for fiscal year 2017-2018. LRA Item 3K, Out-of-State Travel Request for Local Redevelopment Authority Executive Director. Are there any member wishing to pull or discuss any of the items read? Anyone from the public wishing to discuss any of the items read? Seeing none, I bring it back to the City Council for a recommendation or consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendars for all items except for 3E.
We have a motion to approve all items on the consent calendar with the exception of 3E and a second.
Council Authority Members Fossey?
Yes.
Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor Chair O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, we're going to look at the consent calendar, item 3E. Resolutions, Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District. One, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California initiating proceedings for the annual levy of assessments for the Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Number two, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for the Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District declaring its intention to levy annual assessments for fiscal year 2017-2018. Number three, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California for preliminary approval of the annual levy report for the Crossroads Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year 2017-2018. Do I have any comments from the council? Seeing none, do I have any comments from the public? I'll bring it back and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept item 3E.
Second?
Council Members Fossey?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
All right, before we go into our new business, we do have some new business. Just to, I'd like to recognize from Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District, the new chief. Chief, I'm going to destroy your last name, but Rick Weigle? 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 He's, just took over the reins last week, and we welcome him to his new position. All right, item 61, Consideration for Associated Regulatory Decisions of Proposition 64 on Commercial Cultivation, Warehousing, and the Manufacturing of Marijuana.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. So council may remember, over the past two months, we've held a couple different workshops on Prop 47 and the associated recreational marijuana. As council may recall, we split it into three sections. The first section was in late April, council heard a report on personal cultivation and directed staff to create an ordinance to regulate that. The next two steps are what we're going to be discussing tonight, which is commercial cultivation, manufacturing, and transportation. And then at the subsequent meeting, the last one this month, we'll be talking about retail and dispensary. We'll use the feedback received from council during that time and bring back in July a, an ordinance for council to consider and adopt. And I'm going to bounce it over to Josiah, who's here again from Churchill White, to help step us through some of the legal framework of the legislation and what's happening most recently.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor and council, thank you for having us back again today. Happy to speak to you about this sensitive issue. Just start off by saying this is a pared-down version of what we've seen a couple times. So for those in the audience, if this is your first time kind of being brought up to speed on some of the state actions around Prop 64, as well as the medical marijuana regulatory system, you know, this is again a pared-down version. There's a lot to be discussed about this, but we will focus discreetly and distinctly tonight on cultivation, manufacture, and what is on the agenda as warehousing. So, there we begin. So just jumping right off, and I will say, you know, I had a whole slide here about federal issues, but we do understand that federally marijuana is a Schedule I drug, has no accepted medicinal uses, and as such is federally illegal. But we'll just get right into the state marijuana regulation. We understand that it is legal in California, and we want to kind of parse out what's happening at the state level and how that affects us here locally. So we'll start off by defining terms. So cultivation is the planting, growing, harvesting. It's the actual cultivating process. We call it the commercial designation when it's not for personal use. So personal use restricts cultivation at six plants grown indoors. If you're cultivating more than six plants, if you're cultivating for the purpose of commercial exploitation of that product, then that would fall directly under the definition. Manufacturing is the preparation of edibles, byproducts, and concentrates, which are like distillates and oils and a whole host of products. I think the key thing to know right there is whether you're talking about a volatile or a nonvolatile substance. Volatile substance being something that has the propensity to, you know, blow up or whatever have you, causing some concerns, and nonvolatile being what you would see more in the preparation of edibles. So taking marijuana product and turning it into something that's for edible consumption. I would also note here, manufacture also relates to the packaging and processing of marijuana. So even if it was just strictly dried flour, if you were to be doing some type of packaging, and there are regulations and laws that are specific to the packaging, that would be considered manufacturing activity. Transportation is the transfer of cannabis product from one licensee to another. That type of transfer activity does require a commercial transfer, does require a transport license. We'll break that down a little bit more because there are some caveats to that. But, you know, on a personal level, right now in California, an adult over 21 can give away marijuana to an ounce to a certain person. If you're talking about large-scale transactions where there's going to be exchange of money for the, for the product, that would require the license. Distribution is what we're going to be discussing as warehousing tonight, but it's the procurement, sale, and transport of cannabis kind of from a distribution hub. It's what you would see in any kind of typical brick-and-mortar business if you're taking your product from a, you know, manufacturing site to a distribution hub out to retail. Testing, analysis of marijuana products. That's kind of testing on multiple levels. One for safety, just ensuring that there are no pesticides, chemicals, or any of those harmful impurities. It also tests the cannabinoids and terpenes, which are kind of some of the psychoactive properties of the marijuana. And, you know, that testing kind of helps, number one, the user identify what they would be using. And secondarily, again, of course, trying to keep it free from harmful substances and additives. I will say as a quick note, not on my notes here, but the Prop 64, California's Adult Recreational Use Law, actually has in there some consideration of if the US federal government eventually does legalize marijuana federally and the FDA would regulate marijuana as a product, then there is a designation for organic-certified marijuana. So that's not relevant at this point, but it does kind of show you the legis, or the drafting intent to say, you know, there could be a future envisioned where, you know, testing goes beyond saying, is this safe? But it also, is it organic? So there's a future being considered already in the, in the law. Okay, we're going to now get into the license breakdown. So the state licensing authorities are currently drafting regulations for state licenses. The stated date for the issuance of licenses will be January 1, 2018. So really right around the corner right now. Last time I was here before the council, I alluded to the fact that regulations will be published soon, and draft regulations have been issued. You know, we've been taking them, analyzing them. The public comment period is still open, and the rulemaking process is still ongoing. So we are not at a final position to say, hey, let's take, let's do an analysis of these regulations to go from, you know, get a little bit more granular from just what the statute holds. However, they are moving the process along. There are regulations out there. Kind of get into more specifics about these license types, but we'll stay at the 30-foot level for now and just talk about each of these systems. So MCRSA, which stands for Medical Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, that's specifically applicable to the medical system. Creates 17 license types for commercial marijuana businesses in six categories. That's cultivation, manufacturing, test, I'm sorry, transportation, distribution, dispensary, and testing. We provided definitions for most of those. We left out dispensary notably because we won't be discussing that today. ALMA, which is the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, again, Prop 64, it's also referred to as, it's what was passed by voter referendum last November. Creates 19 license types for commercial marijuana businesses, and they are in parallel to the MCRSA. The huge distinctions are that it allows for vertical integration, micro businesses, and large cultivators. To unpack that just a bit, I'll first start by saying, you know, there will be changes to this dual system of medical versus recreational. There are bills, there was a budget bill today. You know, I work in Sacramento. I was in the Capitol today, and there were a lot of the marijuana players who were in the building today addressing a budget trailer language that is proposing to make a lot of reconciliations between these two systems that are currently existing. So we can pretty much bank on this changing. But I think that our best, most pragmatic approach at this time is to, number one, as referenced in the agenda for this council, focus specifically on the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. And secondarily, be prepared for a time when those systems are consolidated, one way or another. And there are varying proposals going around out there, but essentially, long and the short of it is, if somebody is able to purchase cannabis at a retail operation at a certain point in 2018, for example, and doesn't require a medicinal license, then there's a significant disincentive to get the license. there's a significant disincentive to get the license. I mean, the license does, the medicinal license, pardon me, recommendation. So, the medicinal recommendation does allow you some minor tax benefits on the sale at the retail level, but in terms of this, you know, the overall system, looking at what the Bureau of Medical Cannabis Regulation is going to do through the state, looking at all the oversight that the legislature wants to have, it's, there's, there's too much controversy between the two laws, and they're going to need to reconcile them, and that's going to be happening right now. So, to dive again into these specific licensing schemes that we have in front of us, first of all, a license is required at the state level. So, the state level will give a business operator the affirmative defense in any type of criminal action. Actually, it wouldn't be affirmative defense, it would not be illegal activity. So, it would create the protection and safe harbor for those who wanted to do and comply with California's marijuana laws. There's also a structure where the locals have to give their approval, too. Now, I will say that the language is written, interestingly, that local approval is not required for a state license. However, the state will not issue a license where the locals ban it. So, whatever this council decides ultimately, it's in the best interest, and we would recommend that you send your ordinances and you send your laws to the Bureau of Cannabis Regulation so that they can know what's on the books, so that when they're issuing licenses to applicants who are representing Riverbank or saying, hey, I want to operate a business in Riverbank, there can be some coordination between the state and the local on that piece. I'll next talk about vertical integration, which I mentioned right here. Vertical integration means allowing multiple licenses for one license holder. So, draft, the draft regulations have been issued, and they're undergoing comments, as I said, but doing our best interpretation of the current statutes, a licensee may hold multiple licenses except for testing. So, you cannot do cultivation, manufacture, and testing, but you could do cultivation and manufacture, you could have a license for each of those in one license holder on one specific site. There's another exemption for that. That's a type five license, which is a large scale, and I'll address that actually a little bit more in a second, and we'll move on. So, this is the license type chart. Again, these are the type of licenses issued under the MCRSA at the state level. So, this is what the state is going to be allowing, and I wanted to point out just a few of them as the city considers its cultivation policy. So, if the city were to, let's say, for example, want to do cultivation, manufacture, and distribution in one place, for example, co-locate the facilities, and one person was able to have a license to do all those things, you would be wanting to take a look at the different cultivation types. So, type one A would be for an indoor cultivation, but it would be small, so that's only up to five thousand square feet. The cultivation specialty mixed light would also be small, but it would have a combination of natural light and supplemental artificial light. So, that would be kind of when you're looking at the development of this project, when you're looking at what facility is going to be used. Those are considerations that have to be undertaken, maybe not so much for the locals, but whoever is able to obtain that license locally will certainly need a sign-off from the state, and it would prove them to fit neatly into one of these license types if they're going to be seeking these licenses and required to have them. Another type worth taking a close look at are type two A and two B. So, those are now still indoor cultivations, but they're from five thousand to ten thousand square feet. So, five thousand to ten thousand, this is artificial only, and this is natural and supplemental light. So, again, the size of the grow operation is a significant consideration in the issuance of licenses. Type three A and three B are also potentially, I must have gone backwards here, oh, there we are, three A and three B, indoor, artificial light, that's ten thousand square foot to an acre. So, those are considerations. Again, that's kind of setting out. There's a zero to five, five to ten, and ten and above, which would be a different type of license. A nursery is where no, actually growing flower will happen, but that allows for up to an acre of nursery space, but that's to grow clones and plants. So, again, if you're looking at cultivation, not just for harvesting, but also to continue to clone the genetics of a plant, you'd be looking at that type four cultivation nursery. And again, to frame this again for why it's relevant to the city, I would reiterate that when making determinations and writing this city's ordinances, when the city is making determinations of what works best for the city of Riverbank, you're going to want to be in parallel to what's going to happen here at the state level. We'll get into the ALMA-specific ones, and again, it can all change. I mean, we're in changes and consolidates. Again, just helping us think about what's out there. These are the large-scale grows. That would be a question for the council and for the city if eventually they can envision something larger than twenty-two thousand square feet. The reality, however, is that those licenses won't be issued until twenty twenty-three. So, if, you know, the council is considering making actions before that time, large scale would be something to think about scaling up to, should that be the desire. And those cannot be combined with other license types. These manufacturer one and manufacturer two licenses, right? So, one for the production of volatile or nonvolatile substances, and type two for the production using volatile substances. The local municipality could decide to just issue one license for manufacturing, or one type. But again, at the state level, they would be required to get one for each specific purpose of manufacturing. We'll take a quick look at the license category interaction to, just to get another intimate sense of how the supply chain works in a sense. You would have a cultivator who grows, be required to go through a licensed transporter to then a manufacturer. The licensed transporter would then take it to a distribution center at that distribution level before going to the retail user. There would be a requirement for third-party testing. Again, that third-party testing cannot be in-house for whatever operations are going on at that facility. It must be a third-party. License transport, again, into a dispensary delivery, which is the end retail user. The last thing that I think is very important to talk about, if this city considers distribution, and again, I'll clarify for all those in attendance, distribution is a term used in the state code, in the state laws. Today on our agenda, we've discussed warehousing, so using a big warehouse facility and storing and using it as a distribution center, but it would really be a distribution license to participate in the warehousing activities. That distribution license would give you the transport license under the current status of the law, under the current status of the Adult Use Act. So, what that means is if you were doing cultivation, manufacture, and warehousing in one facility, you know, at first I was thinking, well, perhaps somebody would have to have a licensed transporter to just take it from this table to the next table, right? But under the model currently at law, if you have a distribution license, you can do the transportation of the marijuana. With that being said, I will kind of turn it back over to Sean to discuss the options before the council, and I will make myself available here at the podium to answer any questions about particular issues, particularly as it applies to the locals authority to mitigate any concerns through the development of, you know, codes, ordinances, some type of agreement to very neatly and very tightly regulate what happens at a facility.
Thank you, Josiah. So, just to kind of frame council's discussion, in your report, you'll see a similar decision tree to the last, the last time we discussed indoor cultivation, personal, which really sort of steps through a couple of fairly simple decisions that end up with very complicated results. If, at the very beginning, it's should council permit these types of uses? And I think although Josiah's explained that there's going to be a large variety of those, probably for the purposes of our land use discussion, it's best to sort of think of them in terms of what they are, which is industrial, semi-industrial type uses. If the answer is no, that this is not something that the council is interested in permitting at this time, that's a very simple discussion. We'll create a code that bans it and we'll move on. If the answer is yes, the question would be, by which level of regulation would council be comfortable with? There's a more sort of detailed level of control, and then there's a lower level. The lower level would include some sort of classification within our zoning ordinance within either industrial or semi-industrial areas that would allow a permitting process to go forward, so similar to kind of like conditional use permits that we have for various uses currently. The higher level of regulation review would be some type of project review process that has a planning component, a conditional use permit of some kind, and a tied development agreement to that use. And the reason that I mention that is it's a similar model to what Series has most recently used, and one of the reasons they use that is it very directly allowed the city to enter into contractual agreement with the applicant to offset potential effects that the business may have on the community that they're part of, as well as very clearly defined specifics about how the business is to operate to make sure that they kind of maintain as much control as possible. So, there's, there are more than three options, but I gave three just in the interest of framing the discussion and allowing council to kind of extrapolate from there. But again, higher, option one, higher level of regulation review and permitting to include a development agreement. Option two, something less than that, pretty much just having them go through a planning process. And option three, prohibition. So, this is really a time for council to discuss that, and then what would be helpful to staff is if, as part of the discussion, there's some discussion on land use, in other words, where, from a zoning perspective, would be appropriate for this.
Mayor, if appropriate, may I just add something to what Sean had to say there? First of all, I would just say, you know, blanket recommendation. In terms of zoning, I think in industrial use, repurposing something already zoned for industrial use makes a lot of sense. That's just a one-sentence recommendation. I think other than that, you know, in terms of Sean's discussion of a development agreement versus something more in the traditional land use and zoning planning process, we would recommend that you kind of use a belt-and-suspenders approach where you have a combination of both ultimately, right? You don't want to just do a development agreement and kind of not update your code from a zoning perspective. I mean, we know Riverbank already has a ban on medical dispensaries. You would certainly want to do the code update. You know, I would advise doing some type of conditional use permit nonetheless, kind of looking at it as the lower option being a floor, and then if you're going to add the development agreement to get the additional local control, to get the additional ability to make contractual, you know, provisions, part of that development, then that makes complete sense, but you're going to want to have the enforcement arm of a CUP, a business license that you can revoke, because if you don't, what you may end up is a situation where if the development agreement is breached or something like that, then you could be litigating but not able to stop the business, right? So, just making sure that you have that enforcement arm in code nonetheless. But if you want to kind of extend the city's influence, then you would use the development agreement.
Okay, I think I want to hear from the public and see what they have to say about, Stanislaus County did vote it in, you know, a little over fifty percent in our area. So, there is a desire and a need, I guess. So, if you have an opinion on it, please come up and speak now. No public comment on this? Oh, there we go.
Governor Ritchie, resident of Riverbank. I read through all the stuff, and I think that they talked about option one, two, and three, and the toughest one I didn't think was probably appropriate because a lot of the stuff is just stuff we do anyhow with any kind of business. But as the gentleman, the consultant said, there may be a level two, and then some parts of level three that you need to put in. The other thing I'm concerned about, I'm out of breath, is we have some uniformity within the county, because I would hate to see us here, someone else there, someone else there. I'd like to see the playing field within the county all similar, so that you guys up there maybe work with the county, try to come up with some things, and then we'd have a few maybe specific things that would be a little bit different. But the thing I'm afraid of is that if we regulate and do all this stuff, these people who are going to market this stuff, they have to have a warehouse, they have to have a sales place, trucks, they have to have employees, they have to pay taxes. If we get it too high, too much regulation, then we're going to get the underground stuff again, where guys can stand on the street corners or whatever and pass the stuff out. So, one of the reasons that I thought that the proposition was good is that it would tend to take away from the cartels and all this stuff and put it under control. But if you jack everything too high, then they're going to go around you because it's, it gets up there too high. So, those are the couple of things that I wanted to mention, is one, trying to have a uniform system so we don't have a different thing in every little town, something that we can all compete equally with, and not overregulate to the point where we're not really controlling the marijuana thing, we're going above and beyond, which forces it to go somewhere else. They get the money, we get nothing. We get the backyard sales.
Good evening. My name is Rob DiNapoli. I live in Los Gatos, California, and I, along with Valerie Gange next to me, we represent the owners of the former Sun Garden, no, excuse me, the Gange, it was ten years ago, excuse me, but the, we own the cannery, the Gange Cannery, that's sitting on thirty-one acres here, and we have three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of warehouse space that Valerie and I, along with our two other managers of the property, have been working to repurpose for income in the area. We had somebody occupying that, it was a distribution business, they've left, and now we're busy trying to get another tenant. I was also the president of the company when we sold to Morningstar Packing. My family had operations along with Valerie Gange's family, we had businesses in the Bay Area, and those businesses grew and flourished, but they were squeezed out of that area because of the high cost of operation. We both individually left with our respective canneries. The Ganges moved here to Riverbank, we moved down to Outwater, and relocated our facility. We were still challenged in a very competitive industry, eventually merged, and we existed for three years. But again, the big players in the industry had essentially made it very difficult to compete, and we eventually sold the facility, leased the equipment and the building to a very large and successful operation that ran their tomato operation very efficiently in a very good location for tomato production. So, I have seen firsthand the difficulty of a business operating in an environment that is not always cost-competitive and maybe not always user-friendly. This was a great place to operate. We had, when we eventually merged, we were overseeing, I would say, close to eight hundred employees. At least a hundred or more were full-time employees here in Riverbank, and we enjoyed operating here. But the competitors, and particularly the ones that bought us out, they were, they had less cost restrictions when they, in their operation. They were located in a facility, for instance, that would, could flood irrigate their wastewater, where we were burdened with a city treatment plant, which we had to spend money on. Why I'm going through all this is as I see this industry voting in and obviously is going to become an industry in California, and the DiNapoles and the Ganges who do own a facility, for unclear of any loans, liens, or any encumbrances, are located here in your city, there may be a unique opportunity for this city to get into this business. I don't know anything about the business of marijuana growing or cultivation, but I do know the business of agricultural business, the tomato cannery. And I know if Riverbank is to attract operators, they're going to need to be cost-competitive. And so, as you approach, if you approach the cultivation in your city, I would urge you to view yourself as one of competitors, one of a number of competitors. Cities, we've seen Sacramento, I've seen on the website, they seem to be well ahead of the game, they already have regulations, ordinances, they have, I think, fees established for cultivation. I would urge you to look at them as a competitor, and I'd urge you to look at any other city that's interested in marijuana cultivation as a competitor, and make sure that the fees, the restrictions, the ability to, if you do decide to get in the business, view yourself like I viewed ourselves as competitive. view yourself, like I viewed ourselves, as competitive. And to keep those barriers of entry low, reasonable, allowing you, and let's say us, if they happen to be, if they happen to be located in our facility, to attract the very best operators that exist. They'll have their choice as to which city to locate in. And they'll be looking at, they'll be looking at the ordinances and the restrictions and the fees that the city ultimate, the cities across California ultimately charge to operate in that area. And I think it is, it's critical that, it's critical that we make it easy, not easy, but we make it cost-effective for that operator. We have found ourselves currently in a difficult position, because we happen to be 15 or 20 miles off of 99. So, in terms of a manufacturing business that requires the high volume of trucks going in and out, we find ourselves very, in a very cost disadvantage here in Riverbank. But in looking at the marijuana cultivation, that might not be the case. We're sitting on a facility that is serviced by, because it was a cannery, a good power source. We have access to water and disposal of water. We have 31 acres that is fenced currently, so security is not an issue. And we have, two of us and our two respective cousins manage that facility. So, in terms of decisions and improvements to the land, I think we're in a very good spot. But I think we've all recognized that what starts out as a business opportunity, eventually, businesses or cities are looking for those business opportunities. So, when it starts out to be high fees, that's all okay. But once the business is established and it's a good business, then other cities are trying to pull them in. And you see tax incentives and crazy things to lure companies into their city. I would urge you to take a look at that, what eventually happens in business, and maybe start out at a competitive advantage and really scrutinize it, and look where, if you do decide to get in this business, to make sure that you be the city of choice in attracting not just a operator, but the best operators that are out there. And I'm sure they'll make themselves known, and know that you do have a facility right here in Riverbank with Valerie and I that would be willing to work with you in soliciting an operator that may be worthy of operating here in Riverbank. So, thank you, and I'll make myself or Valerie available for any questions.
You do have a large industrial area out by the Amal Plant. The Gange Cannery is right in the middle of downtown residential areas. But of course, your neighborhoods will be protected. It'll all be on your side as everything else is. I think you're going to have a problem trying to put that in there with all this residential around here. And as far as Prop 64, if you go back and check, City of Riverbank voted it down.
Any other comment? Bring it back to the council for discussion. The intent of our discussion is to provide direction to staff, and our decision will be made once our guidance and they come back with whatever resolution that we make. So, I open it up.
Okay.
Just, their points well taken on both Mr. McRitchie and Mr. DiNapoli. Ms. Halbert's issue is a little different, so we were focused on the business part tonight. But on the cost, too much regulation and a competitive advantage issue, that's one reason that we favor the DA approach. In Series, we simply negotiated a deal with a private business, so that's, that gave all the flexibility that you heard about tonight. The regulations were reasonable, and not that this is going to be replicated in every deal in every city, but it starts off at $50,000 a month the first year, 75 the second, and 100 the third year. So, you have that built in, not where you have a tax where you don't know what's going to come in with multiple businesses. So, you could do that with multiple businesses in Riverbank with the development agreement approach.
As we move forward with this, it's uncharted water, and on one hand, it's kind of exciting opportunities for the city. And I think we need to look at it and approach it like that. And I thank you for bringing it to our attention to think about being competitive. I really liked that, and I appreciate that. Thank you for bringing that. I, well, you've heard what I said with the personal grows, and I'll do it again. I think that we've heard what the, what the public has voted this in. I think we need to move forward. I do think the city, and I love the fact that we have local control here, that we can make this work for Riverbank, and set our regulations and go forward. I'm all in favor for the development agreement option personally, so that would be where I would lean towards. Option one for me, yeah. Because I think it encompasses two. And I think it encompasses what Josiah was talking about, too. It gives us enough of the control of the city to regulate and have, have what we want in place, but also enough that we can be flexible enough.
Well, I like option one also, and I appreciate Mr. McRitchie saying that we need to consider, Angel Sire, too, that have a combination of both of the regulations. We already know what we have in place as far as new development when it comes to the city, what regulations are already out there. And I also like the fact that we will have local control. We can take a look and see exactly how to move forward, because this is all so new to everybody, and there's a lot of what-ifs, and the federal government has not accepted this at all. And so, do the businesses still run the risk of the federal government coming in and closing all these cities down because they're trying to move forward and, you know, make their cities prosper, or? But I just think that it's all, everybody has to kind of like step on eggshells as we move forward. And I'm glad to see that the state itself is moving along with their particular licenses and having control. And I also like the fact that I heard you, that we need to send our ordinances to the state, so that they are aware of what we're doing here in Riverbank, so that a license is not issued and we don't know anything about it. So, that, I appreciated getting that fact. But I would like to see us move forward with option number one.
Just like to state, first of all, the world's changing, business is changing. It's not the same as it was 20 years ago. When the cannery was here, there were problems with it, smells, et cetera, things like that. We have to, as a council, look at what opportunities are being provided to help this city economically get on its feet and go forward. To do that, we need to pick the best method, since the marijuana is here, it's not gone away. If we banned it in this town, they could just put it right across, in San Joaquin County, right across at the city with boundaries, and we would get no revenue. Likewise, they could do the same thing for our boundaries with Modesto. So, I personally feel, even though I'm not a big supporter of marijuana, this is a business, and we have to look at it like that. And we have to put it together the best way to benefit the community, control it, and also get the revenue to help us manage it. I personally also go along with, what my former council member said, I like the idea of the developmental. It's simpler, we're not taxing, we can work with it more directly, and it will also keep the development of the marijuana, the processing of it, and growing of it, in maybe one particular area, which makes it much easier for the city to police it, watch it, take care of it, et cetera. So, for all those reasons I've given, I would go along with my colleagues in supporting it.
I also agree with option one. I think regulating it under a development agreement is a good idea. I also want to make sure that the public does understand, this doesn't mean that we're going to put something in the middle of downtown and allow this company to come in where the smell is coming out of the building, that there's trucks coming day and night. I don't believe any of us are interested in having them sell it directly out of that building. So, you're not going to see, you probably won't even know it's a plant. There won't, there'll be high security, you know, we're not going to jeopardize the surrounding community, the people that live in the area. Your cannery is just down the street, I live off of Roselle. I certainly don't want to be able to smell it. I don't want to have to worry about my daughter riding my, her bike down the street, because there's people there. I also agree that we need to be competitive to get the good manufacturers into the city. So, I think we need to really look at who we're going to bring in when we decide to go forward with whatever we decide on. So, that's my opinion.
In response to a couple of items, one, we have been working with the county. County wants to tax, and tax. And right now, it is illegal to have a dispensary in Stanislaus County. There's 18 dispensaries that no one's doing anything about. Manufacturing's happening. If you have in place individuals reputable who are manufacturing, possibly even dispensing, they will know if their business is being jeopardized by an illegal operation. So, that's the only reason why I would be entertaining this at this time. I do agree that we need a developer agreement approach. I believe that the city manager is the one that will execute it after processes with licensing to and through the planning commission. I believe that we need to do changes to our land use. I believe that should be taken into effect prior to or simultaneously, looking at operator agreement with option one. I believe safeguards must be in place for both safety of the public, as well as safeguards to proper business performance. That if we accept the business, they have their guidelines. If they don't follow the guidelines, there is a clause of some sort of an immediate The business is here. We have dispensaries that aren't allowed in yet, but they're here. So, they got their products from somewhere. So, there is cultivation, there is manufacturing. Here, we can control it, we can keep the product safe. And although I do believe that we're going to see the sins visited upon California that have been visited upon Colorado and Oregon and Washington, Washington DC. But we mitigate, manage, the best that we can on that. So, is there, anybody wants to add anything to what we've given Sean to draft up?
Mayor, if I could just add for one little bit of clarification. So, I've got the direction on development agreement, and that's fine. We need to talk just a teeny little bit about zoning. What I would like to do is put together something that also ties, since you've mentioned a zoning code change, we need to talk about whether industrial areas, light industrial areas, heavy commercial areas, which ones are appropriate in the council's discretion to even be considered. Because keep in mind, under DA, it's really like you look at every project individually and have a discretionary decision about it. So, you'll have that control, but we'd like you to pare it down to an area, you know, zoning area that would make it so that if someone comes in that lives on, you know, Roselle, for example, in a residential neighborhood, we could say, well, you know, look, it's not allowed in residential.
I believe an industrial area only is appropriate.
And I feel we should limit it to one industrial area, myself.
I would prefer it be an industrial area and not be specific, at least not at this time until, because you don't know what agreements can be made.
Right, that's another one of the beauties of the DA approach.
Let me clarify what I meant, was not having multiple industrial areas. I'm not saying one specific one, but I think we should limit our.
Oh, yeah, limited amount.
Yeah, the amount, not the location, but the amount of, I agree.
I don't want to see more than, I don't want to see more than one of anything in
the city.
It goes back to the competition and good.
Right. The dispensaries in Stanislaus County says that they can handle 36 dispensaries, even though they're all illegal, without any adding of security or inspections or anything else along those lines. And the cultivation's happening. If we put it generally into industrial areas, but only have, you know, we limit the amount in, yes. And then, at that time, we specifically direct. That's what I envisioned but didn't say. Does that work?
Yes, if you use the DA approach, it's a project-by-project basis. And I'd also add that the DA, the one with, we've prepared, has a termination clause. It also addresses that federal issue. For example, if the feds say, you need to cease and desist marijuana industries within your city, which I think is the worst case that would ever happen to the city, there's a clause that says, sorry, folks, but, you know, you're out of business, because we can't take on that liability with you. And then also, security is usually a condition as well, and it's, you know, a pretty heavy condition, and they've found in other places that it improves the security of the surrounding area as well.
And speaking of security, this may be probably a different budgetary, but any funds received for the city should be directed towards enhancement of local security forces, whether that means police or whatever.
Yeah, we, those monies would come in and be discretionary for councils, if councils can make a policy decision that we are going to use this money for additional sheriff, deputies, additional code enforcement, you know, whatever council decides. I think, Mayor, I have enough from the council that I probably don't need a formal vote on this item. I have enough.
I prefer a formal vote on it. Okay, as described, are there anyone wishing to either enhance it or make a motion to accept for direction?
Make a motion that we accept option one, as stated with some of the guidelines. A second?
We have a motion to accept in a second.
Council members, Fossey.
Yes.
Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Sarah Bryan.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, moving on to item 6.2, consideration of a resolution, amending resolution number 2016-026, outdoor water use policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Public Works Superintendent, Michael Riddell, is going to come up and give a excellent presentation on consideration of expansion of our outdoor water use policy.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As the city manager stated, Michael Riddell, the Public Works Superintendent. I come before you tonight with a recommendation for amendment to our current water policy that was put in place in 2016, that you are all extremely familiar with. So, as we go through this, I'll go kind of quickly. If you've got a question, feel free to stop me at any time. We're looking at current summer schedule, which is April 1st through October 31st, and what we're looking to do is to move to a three-day-per-week. So, the odd number addresses would go Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday, the even number Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday, and there would be no water allowed on Mondays, period. The landscape irrigation prohibited within 48 hours, that's still in place. The state of California has now made that a regulation, so there is no watering within 48 hours of what's considered a measurable rain event. And. And drip and micro spray irrigation is exempt. The winter schedule, which would be November first through March thirty-first, would go to a two day a week. And then the odd numbers would be Wednesdays and Sundays, the even numbers Tuesdays and Saturdays. The hours on both summer and winter schedules stay the same. No watering between the hours of ten AM and seven PM. As we continue with that, then obviously there would be no watering on Monday, Thursdays, and Fridays during the winter schedule. And then you still have the forty-eight hour prohibition and the micro spray and drip are exempt. Now, the micro spray and drip are exempt because that's state regulation. So we're just following what the state of California has said. So there's, and there's, in areas that we currently have enforced that will not change. So the excessive water and flow runoff, that's still part of the state prohibition. The obligation affects leaks, breaks, and malfunctions. Vehicle washing, that was council's choice when we originally set this up in two thousand and sixteen, so that's still in place. The temporary waiver will still be available to residents, and we'll still also have a hardship exemption for individuals to apply for. And I can tell you that through two thousand and sixteen, when we put the water policy in place, we only actually gave one hardship exemption. Only had one person apply for it. So the penalties, there's a pretty big change here from what's currently in place to what we recommend we go into place. So we're going back to the first violation being a warning. The second violation being a thirty-five dollar fine. The third violation being a fifty dollar fine. The fourth, a hundred. The fifth, two hundred, and everyone after that fifth. And you can see the change there. We're coming down, we're coming down considerably in the fine categories. So, and we will still have the fines that are due and payable will be, when you issue a citation, will be placed on a customer's water bill. So that will give us the ability to collect through the ordinance within our municipal code, which means that they don't have any option but to pay. We still will have the appeals process in place. As you're all aware of, they have the ability to appeal it. It has to be filed in a timely manner, which is the fifteen day period, and there is a twenty-five dollar processing fee. And it has to be applied through the city clerk's office. And our appeals board would remain the same, and it would be the planning commission. So just to kind of give you a little bit of background on what we've accomplished since two thousand and ten. You know, when we hit this, in two thousand and fifteen, and we hit this drought, we were already in our two thousand and ten urban water management plan. The state kind of dragged out and grabbed some numbers and said, this is the number you need to meet. And as you're all aware, that ended up with us going from a notice of violation to a state order because we weren't meeting their numbers. However, through our urban water management plan and the process that we took since two thousand and ten, you can see the steady decline that these are downs per person per day, the steady declines we see. And we've kind of plateaued now between fifteen, sixteen, a hundred and eighteen gallons. So that's a pretty good step. So we're twenty-three percent reduction at this point. So as before, when I presented to you last year, we've met our urban water management plan goal. And what the state said that we had to reduce by two thousand and twenty, and we're only in two thousand and seventeen. We actually met that in two thousand and sixteen. And as you're all aware too, that we were able to get that order rescinded after we went through and did the self-certification. So what we're looking for, we'll continue to the education outreach campaign with water use restrictions and conservation measures. Obviously, this will go on the website to give everybody the information they need, and we will more than likely put out a mailer. And the new policy will take effect July one. So it's our recommendation that the resolution to amend the outdoor water use plan be adopted to become effective July one. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
I have a question. Why did the penalty change such a much?
We took a look, I took a look at what some of the other cities are doing when I took this into consideration. And because of the economy and the way things are with this, I made the decision in talking to Sean about this, that we thought we should go ahead and reduce. We have people that are complying, and the amount of citations that we've issued in the last couple of months have really declined. However, people are still watering because you can see that in the years. But I think at this point, this would be the appropriate thing to do.
I just don't see much of an incentive for them to follow the rules. I mean, for a warning and thirty-five dollars, I don't know if people are going to do that.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's, it's obviously at your direction.
I just, you know, you just don't know about the weather. And we could find ourselves in another drought at any moment, anytime. And I just hope people still consider that we don't know what's going to happen in the future and how will the water disappear again. So I don't know. Another question I had was about the water conservation coordinator. So with this, we don't need to still have that person?
That's correct. She will, that position will go away. That staff member will go away. We will then put it on the local staff, water, the street staff, anybody that sees something like that, then they will have the ability to issue the citation. We won't have a person specifically out there looking.
Is more people actually looking?
As they go on their day-to-day, it's their day-to-day business, yeah.
Are we looking at those changes? And is that part of the budget? Will that, when that position disappears, is that?
It will be the end of the month, yeah. It's July, effective July one, they will be longer, longer to be there. And one of the things that we need to keep in mind here too is that I'm still required to monthly report to the state of California how much water we produce and how much water is used by every person every day in this city. So there's, we're going to be monitoring this really close, as we have been for the last two years anyway. So we can see a uptick or a downtick either way. And you'll normally see that in production as you get into the warmer months and that kind of stuff. Obviously, it goes up. Historically, it'll go up. The numbers that I showed you are averages. Okay? So if you take an average of a hundred and fifty-three gallons per person per day in two thousand and ten, there were days or months where they were using over two hundred, two hundred and fifty gallons per person per day. Because your hotter months, they will tend to produce, where you use a lot more water. And then obviously, when you get into cooler months and the wet months, it goes down a lot lower. So if you take it, look at it on an average, we have done a considerable amount of decreasing the amount of water that's used in this city. Can we keep it there? That is what we'll need to work on.
Probably not this weekend, huh?
Next week, we're supposed to go triple digits, so.
Yeah.
And then one other component that we wanted to make clear is that, you know, this was sort of born as a result of a number of community members sort of contacting us and asking as a result of sort of a number of our neighboring cities making this change. So in talking about this with Michael, he was sort of fairly ambivalent about it. Yeah, we can, we can afford to do it with regard to our supply, at least at this time. But if council's opinion was we'd really prefer to stay at two days, that, you know, fine, fine too. It was more about giving the community a little bit different choice on how they perform their water.
Yeah, I can tell you, I've filled with several phone calls about why aren't we at three day a week, but that's always.
And I've seen a lot of talk about it on social media. One of the other things that I've seen on social media that I think, once we send this out, that I would like clarified is when, in the summer, how long do you really need to water your grass for it to stay green with watering three days a week? And then in the winter, how much, how long? I've heard that, you know, twenty minutes of good soaking two days a week is enough to keep your grass green in the winter. You know, I think we need to let people know how long to keep that water on, to make sure.
Yeah, yes. And when we've ran, in the past, when we've ran education, obviously, when we're talking to residents daily, I get people asking me that all the time. Well, you know, there's several factors that have to come into play. How much turf area are you talking about? What kind of grass are you talking about? What kind of sprinkler system and sprinklers are you using? And what's the GPM coming out of that head? So there is no single answer to that question. It really kind of applies to everybody's lawn. It's going to be a little bit different. So, but there are guidelines that you can follow that tells you that, you know. I've, the simple approach to it would be to go out there, turn your sprinklers on, sit there with your watch and watch it. And when you start seeing water running off that lawn and hitting that sidewalk, then obviously that's long enough. Or you can back down a little bit, those kind of things. You know, you take a practical approach to it. And that's what we tried to explain to them.
I could just offer some type of way for them to know, you know, because five minutes obviously is not long enough. An hour is too long, you know, where's that happy medium?
Yeah, and then you go back to there again, like I said, it could, it has a, if you have a lawn that's set up with eighteen pop-ups that's covering only, you know, five hundred square feet, then your two minutes, three minute runtime is plenty, but, you know.
So I like your comment of if it's running off your grass into the sidewalk, then it's, that's long enough. I think a lot of people just don't realize that.
There's a lot of things you can do to your lawn too, to maintain.
I'd just like to say that giving them the opportunity to water their day is okay with me. But I still think we should emphasize that we would prefer them to water two days and, you know, emphasize that we still have to save our water and manage it. Likewise, I know if there was one weakness with our watering two days prior, I would say, I know a lot of people that were watering in the morning and then later after the hours. And hopefully, maybe this will eliminate some of that. And I know that some of them did it because they had the type of soil and whatnot, it soaked it up. And going, they, to give it a little bit more, it made it a little bit more effective by doing it twice a day, late and early, you know, like our audience said, for their type of soil. But that's not all over Riverbank, as you were saying. It depends on the type of soil, the type of lawn you have and whatnot. And I think most people could probably get by doing it two days a week. But I think at the same time, because we do have a supply of adequate water, we still emphasize water conservation. But if they need to do it that third day as long as they're managing correctly, I have no problem with it.
I just had a question. With our smart, our new smart water meters in, are they up and running that you can go in and monitor and check and see if you have leaks or?
The leak detection is currently working for us at, for the individual, not yet. We do not have the app out for the smartphone as of yet.
Do you have an estimated time when that's going to be available?
So literally just the other day, we finalized the connection that we have between our system, Casell, which will allow a resident to be able to log in using their account number, et cetera, and the Aqua Hawk system, which is a system that will allow the residents. We're still doing some final testing. We're going to be doing some training in-house so that my staff knows how to use that. And then along with the completion of the installation of all of the water meters, we're going to have a series of workshops for the residents to come in and learn how to use it as well. So I would say it's probably about two months out before we fully release it.
Are we still installing meters now?
Currently, they're installing the large commercial meters.
All of the residential have been completed?
By understanding, we're at about ninety-five percent. So right now, they're still in the field working, but we've got all the meters in. They're installing the large meters, and they're going back and replacing the, putting in the new B thirty boxes, so.
You mentioned something about a hardship waiver. Was that for the amount of water being used or?
It was a particular use and the times. If memory serves me correctly, and my memory ain't all that great anymore, but I do believe it was a disabled person that we went ahead and granted the hardship exemption.
Water Resource Board is a regulatory agency that is looking at two-pronged approach to control water. One, by assessing amount of water pumped from aquifers. That should be in effect in the next three to five years. And they asked if we would have any objections to them just charging two dollars a water meter per month throughout the state so they could have more money to do better use of regulatory. We have to prove that we can manage the water, okay? Going to three days a week, is that neither here nor there? We're decreasing the amount of water we use. I believe we need to look closely at a tertiary system for this region to include Oakdale, Escalon, and Riverbank. Collect all of those waters, including storm drain system, and have that completed. At right now, current estimate of about twenty-eight million dollars. Funding's out there for low interest and matching grants for whatever we come up with. With a one percent loan from PERS, they'd be getting more than what they're getting with their investments. We can, for about two dollars and fifty cents per person, per connection, for thirty years, pay it off. Yes, that's a lot of money to some people. This is what that'll do. That would prevent the state from coming down on us for pumping from the aquifer. We use that water for two things. During the dry, hot months, pump it to, since we're right across the street from a SSJID irrigation canal provided to farmers. Or with the tertiary, if they allow it into the river, into the river for removal downstream. Secondly, during the wet months, you could pump it into the aquifer and get credit for it. You're pumping, what, six million dollars, six million gallons, is that a month you're collecting?
You're talking about the treatment plant? The treatment plant's running about one point six a day, so.
One point six million a day, so that's fifty-two million dollars, I mean fifty-two million gallons. Do the same for Oakdale, one-third the amount for Escalon. And we all could collect it and get beneficial use out of it from the state. The state is looking at the tunnel system. It's, what is it, Water Fix It? Okay, and that is going to take water from the northern portion of the delta. Is the sole reason why they want us to increase on forty, by forty percent from the Twalomee, San Okeen, and the Stanislaus River during months of collection. Okay, with that, gives us less water, more pumping on the aquifer. And then they'll say, you're distressing the aquifer, and then they'll take it over. Kid you not. That's their thinking. So we need a solution of use, but then we need a solution for reuse and to replenish. So I want a little bit more due diligence or more effort towards the replenishment, please. We still have to maintain our twenty percent or greater reduction from our twenty-ten urban water management plan. And didn't the governor want us to go to thirty percent?
That was the talk, but that never came about. Under the two thousand and fifteen update on the urban water management plan, there was no talk, there was no restriction put in for the amount. They're still sticking with that twenty percent by two thousand and twenty at this time. That doesn't mean it's not subject to change, but at this time, it's still that twenty percent.
Because I would prefer that we maintain a two day a week. And watch carefully our urban water management usage. If we start increasing the usage, if we go to three and we start slipping to two thousand and fourteen figures, which was, what, eighteen percent?
Yeah, something, somewhere in that neighborhood.
So then we cut the third day off.
Well, I mean, the way we have it set up now, because it's by resolution, you guys, the council can do it as it sees fit at any given time. So by your direction, we can, we can, we can give them the third day, but then you can also take the third day back.
Could be directed to bring you back some data end of summer, if you'd like to kind of see what the changes look like.
Yeah, that'd be familiar every month.
Yeah, I mean, I can get, yeah, I have to, I have to report to the state of California production numbers. Typically, I email the city manager with those numbers and Maricela, so she can see what's going on. what's going on with what I report. And obviously, you'll see, you know, it's, it's standard, you can look back through the, all the data that I have, or you can watch the climb through the summer and the drop through the winter. That's, that's the normal course in the valley for any city, depending on how much. But in the summertime, when you've got somebody there that's using, you know, that, you're talking about seventy-five, eighty percent of the water that's being used is for landscape irrigation. Right?
I'd also like to watch the number of citations you give out. If we find we're giving out a lot of warnings, I think we need to revisit the costs.
Any public comment on this topic?
I'm McRitchie, Riverbank, Mayor and members of the council. There's a lot of things wrong with which you guys are saying up there. A couple of things. First of all, this water recommendations, no good. You have in there that it's to be from April to October, whatever it is. We're coming into about seven days of a hundred-degree weather, and we're fiddling around here. I'm not going to have anything left in my backyard, I can tell you that right now. I lost it last year because I didn't water it. And if you have two days, you're not going to survive this next seven-day deal. This thing should be retroactive or should be effective immediately, or you take the water lady and send her home, and we're going to water illegally. But there's a lot of stuff that goes on with this. I mean, we take a look at it and we say we've got water problem. Without the water, you have global warming, let's face it. My backyard was ten degrees hotter when we moved in with nothing, no cover back there, than it is with even our brown grass. So if you don't have this stuff, where's the CO2, which we don't like, going to get converted into oxygen? If you don't have any plants, here we're out here, we're knocking out subdivisions. We had two hundred trees per acre, now we've got four trees per acre. It's ridiculous. So anyhow, that's a side issue. But everybody tends to look at their own little thing. The water wizards want forty percent water going down the rivers. Okay, that's fine if you just look at that, but what effect does it have somewhere else? This thing here should be effective immediately, because there's going to be nothing left, I'll tell you. Some of us who have little vegetable gardens and so on, we can't do it. Now, it's, talk about no brains. Mike mentioned, when I was in Dublin, I watered twice a year, my tomato plants. It was a heavy clay gunk, and once you got it wet, it held about a foot of water. My land right now, my land, my backyard, it's sandy alone. And so I do what someone was saying you shouldn't do, and I do a five-minute in the morning and a five-minute in the evening, because the water penetrates so fast down, it doesn't take more than five minutes to get that water through the root zone, which is only one and a half, maybe at the most, two inches. So, every place a little bit different. But I can tell you, on the other side over here, yeah, they have a lot of clay, and it's a, it's a, it holds more water, and they can get by with it. To me, to put twenty minutes' worth of water on my place, ridiculous. It, it would be a flood. Five minutes, that's all we take, we don't have any water running off. So, anyhow, that was one, one thing. Next thing, it shouldn't be rainfall, it should be measurable rainfall, which I think has been in the verbiage before, because if you get a little spit, that's rainfall, but it's not going to do a darn thing for your lawn or your vegetables or any of the rest of it. So measurable rainfall, maybe it's a tenth of an inch, you can set whatever thing, but it's got to be something that's going to go more than just evaporate before it hits the ground. The other thing, sort of a offset to Councilmember Fossey, in our neighborhood, we have some widows and some older people and so on, and they've gotten a warning. And the problem is, is that they don't know how to work their sprinkler systems. So I do probably five or six. Some depend on their landscaper or their on-maintenance people to come by, and they don't come by every day, they only come by once a week. And so if a thing's not right, and they get a warning, well, they can correct that. Plus, they can't afford the hundred dollars. We're finding this is going to be a real problem, just to pay these water bills once we put it up to the realistic water usage instead of the, sort of the base water rate that we have right now. So I think that, you know, the Scaf law, he's going to do it anyhow. My son has a landscape business on the coast. Some of these guys have these big homes, shoot, they can take a hundred or two-hundred-dollar fine and not care a lot at all, they just do it. And here's these other poor people out there with the recycle, the number three thing that the mayor was talking about, trying to keep their trees alive. The other thing you look at, and you look at the urban forest devastation we've had in the last couple of years, I don't know how many people have taken out their big redwood trees. I've got a neighbor next door, it's going to come right through my house, the tree's dead on the door now, and had been great for all these years, but there's no deep watering, and so these trees are dying. So I don't know, I should say a summary here, but my summary is that this thing should not be effective July one, it should be effective right now. If we're going to do an April to October, this is not April, it's July, it's bad news. It's a hundred degrees, a hundred degrees for seven days. It's not going to work, guys. If you ask me, I'm going to be paying my, my bill for this one, because I just can't afford for a couple of days to have all my landscape burned up. So anyhow, like I say, do measurable rainfall, make this effective tonight.
It is measurable rainfall, sir.
What was just presented to you?
Landscape irrigation is prohibited within forty-eight hours after a measurable rainfall event ends.
Okay, and why was it put up there as not miserable rainfall? That's what I'm saying, we don't have consistency. Let's get it right. What are we doing here? We have July one, 2017, and it should be April first, what are you guys doing? I was over pruning for some old lady in Riven, just a freebie deal. They had a big sign out there a month ago, three days watering, big banners all over their town. This is ridiculous. Riverbank is so far behind. Modesto came out two weeks ago about what they were going to do. My neighbor, he's down in Modesto, he's already watering. Shoot, we're the only ones I know around here that are on a three-day-a-week thing.
Thank you. I do need to make one clarification, too, Mayor, on the PowerPoint, that there is a mistake on there. The hours is ten AM to four PM. So no watering between those hours on, on the winter schedule. That we, that, that change was done because of the daylight savings time.
Michael, I think Scott made a good analysis on one thing, because I see this a lot. I think we need to keep pounding away with more education about how long they should water. I take walks around my neighborhood, and I see a lot of watering going on that's too long, like he mentioned, for the type of soil that it's there. And if we could get that across to people, it might give us some big savings, because I see a lot of people, I feel, they just think they turn it on for a half an hour and they need that half hour, and as Mr. McRitchie said, sometimes they don't need that much time, you know. So I'd like to see us do more along the educational lines to keep getting the public more aware of how much they should water and the length of time and so on, et cetera. Okay?
Okay.
Also, what would be the challenges of making this effective tomorrow?
None whatsoever.
I would like to ask, at least make it effective tomorrow?
I, I just want to make a comment to Mr. McRitchie. We don't design policy changes based on localized weather patterns that change week to week. We plan this stuff like a month ahead of time. So while, point's well taken, the reason to the July first date was, kind of, wasn't arbitrarily picked, it was intended so that we could get some education out there, but with that said, if it's effective immediately, that's fine, we just will kind of educate in the arrears, which is no problem.
Has the State Water Board come on out with the ending of the drought officially? I believe we're still.
They're, they're still looking at their regulations.
They haven't changed, so we've fallen in either of them.
The proclamation.
Which is one of the reasons, they're stating one July they're going to do it, that's why we're in concert with the state.
But the proclamation has ended, and the State Water Board has made the recommendation. So they're not holding anybody to any, but that, you're right about that July one date.
I do think with the weather coming, with the hundred-degree days.
Yeah, it's, it's just a matter of, of getting the word out that they're allowed to go three-day-a-week. Obviously, we can't do that overnight, the type thing, we can start first thing tomorrow, and we can get it up on the website as quickly as we can to let people know, but, you know, in order to get information out, typically for us, we have to put together some type of mailer and that type of thing, and that usually takes time.
Well, I certainly will post it on social media, and I think it'll be very appreciated. And I'm sure Scott's going to do the same.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll put it up on Facebook, on, the Public Works has, has a Facebook page, and we'll put it up there, and we'll also put it up on, on the city website. But we do have a.
Any further public comment? CNN, I'll bring it back to the council for a recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution with one exception into making it effective immediately, and to make sure we have it to three days.
I second.
We have a motion to approve the resolution effective immediately and a second.
Councilmembers Fossey?
Yes.
River Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
No.
Motion passes for one.
Item six-three, consideration for proposed resolutions. One, resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the California Home Finance Authority Community Facilities District, number 2014-1, Clean Energy, to finance renewable energy improvements, energy efficiency, and water conservation improvement, and electric vehicles charging infrastructure, and approving associated membership in the joint exercise of powers authority related thereto SB 555 Y Green. Two, a resolution consenting to the inclusion of properties within the city's jurisdiction in the California Home Finance Authority PACE program to finance renewable energy generation, energy and water efficiency improvements, and electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and approving associate membership in the joint exercise of power authority related thereto AB 811 Y Green Works program. A resolution consenting to the inclusion of the properties within the city's jurisdiction in this California Municipal Finance Authority Open PACE program, authorizing CMFA to accept applications from property owners, conduct contractual assessment proceedings, and levy contractual assessments within the territory of the cities. And approval of two corresponding joint exercise of power agreement relating to the California Home Finance Authority PACE program and the California Municipal Finance Authority Open PACE program.
Thank you, Mayor. So this evening, under consideration is the inclusion of the Y Green and California Municipal Finance Authority, which is otherwise known as PACE programs. Riverbank, as the council's well aware, has already participated in the past in a program like this, it's called the HERO program, they've done a number of projects in Riverbank. The mechanism, for those who don't know, allows property owners to finance upfront capital costs for energy projects, and then have that financing recorded as a lien against the subject property, which they then pay off small amounts under their property tax payment schedule. As I mentioned, in 2014, the city of Riverbank, much like most cities in the valley, adopted the HERO program, and since that time, we've been looking for ways to sort of expand the options available to city residents so that we can ensure some competition in the marketplace, which we believe would be beneficial to consumers in Riverbank. The requested approvals this evening are on the screen there, they essentially are three separate resolutions, which would allow us to have two Y Green programs, and George from Y Green is here this evening, he can speak to that a little bit, and then the third with the California PACE program, which would give yet another option. The benefits to these additional programs would be, as I mentioned, additional competition, more consumer choice. Interestingly, these programs allow for commercial and agricultural energy efficiency projects, whereas HERO is primarily residential, and it also kind of allows for some variety in financing terms for consumers, which, which does not currently exist. There's no direct financial impact, as there's no cost associated with joining and becoming associate member of these JPAs. The city has no administrative marketing or financial obligations, though, as council knows, we do try to get out the word about these programs so the community knows. Spillover benefits from investment in energy efficiencies reflected in the property value, though it's very difficult to quantify how that helps us. The, interestingly, the CMFA Open PACE program shares twenty-five percent of its issuance fees, and they're granted back to our general fund, and then an additional twenty-five percent is donated by that agency to a nonprofit organization within the city. Additional consideration, it's, so there's been some press, and I had a, a couple of members of the public contact me about some class action suits that have been going around with a number of PACE programs, and while none of those, as far as I know, have been, been carried through to the judgment phase, what I would note is that what the council and city would be approving if approved tonight are not necessarily endorsing the use of any one PACE program. Every individual property owner must assess whether or not the terms and conditions of these programs are suitable for their personal situation. Our primary goal is to just provide additional options for our residents, and so, as with any loan, it's important that the public make sure they do their due diligence to be sure that it's a, an equitable deal for, for their personal situation. And that wraps up my presentation. George, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium just for a moment and speaking a little bit about, briefly about Y Green and.
Sure. Thanks, Sean. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is George Postolopoulos, I am with Y Green Energy Fund, and we administer the Y Green Works PACE program, and I'm the manager for district development here in northern California. And there's a couple of things I'd like to point out. First and foremost, Y Green, and actually the industry itself, the first and foremost thing that is important in this, in this type of program is consumer protections. So we make sure, and we've been doing this for years now, that every property owner that applies for financing with us understands exactly how it gets repaid, what the terms are, what the interest rates are, that there is a chance that when you do go to sell your home, you need to understand that you might, you may have to pay off the, the lien. So we go through all these different checkpoints, if you would, to make sure property owners understand what they're getting into. Now, having said that, great things about the PACE program, should you choose it for the residential, on the residential side, since we do both residential and commercial, ag, light industrial, multifamily residential, is that you now have quick access to capital. So with the, with the heat coming up, if your HVAC unit goes out next Wednesday, and, you know, you're short cash, or, you know, you can't afford it right away, PACE is a great option, because on the residential side, the transaction can have, can happen quite quickly, so in a few days, you can have the contractor come out, replace your entire HVAC unit that needs to be permitted, so everything has to be permitted with PACE financing, and that specific HVAC unit has an actual useful life to it, and the terms of financing cannot exceed that. Okay? So those are other protections that we put in place, right? So the customer is not overpaying for that HVAC unit in terms of financing terms, and then we also know, you know, approximate, approximately how much these HVAC units cost, so there's a, there's a little scale that we know how much these things cost. So, anyway, the bottom line is they can have it done within a few days on the HVAC system, and they go back to living in the comfortable situation that they're used to. Commercial property owners, here's where this is a really good benefit, because if you own a commercial property and you want to make improvements to it, the great thing about PACE in general across all property types, it's equity-based lending, it's not credit-based lending. So the amount of money you borrow is not tied to your credit, it's tied to the property. So as a business owner, this is a great opportunity for them, because it's all about working capital. If they don't have that working capital, how are they going to expand their business? How are they going to go, you know, whether it's hiring more employees, whether it's going out and leasing certain equipment, whether it's opening up a brand-new storefront, or whatever it might be, they now have a form of financing that allows them to keep their working capital back into the pocket. And where the city comes in on all that, which is another kind of full-circle benefit about the PACE financing, with those businesses that are expanding and hiring more employees, that's more, you know, payroll taxes, et cetera, et cetera, for the city, and in addition to all the great benefits it does for the property owners, for expanding businesses, if you look at it from what's required by the state. all the greenhouse gas mandates that we have to look forward to, WYGREEN and all PACE programs help achieve that, because when you're looking at property owners that are making energy efficiencies, water conservation projects on their properties, it all helps out. So one thing I wanted to point out, you'll see that we have two resolutions, and I think this is important. There's two pieces of legislation for PACE in the state of California, AB 11 and SB 555. Every other program has the AB 11 model. WYGREEN is the only program, the only PACE program in California, that chose to go and operate and originate under that Senate Bill 555 model. And founders felt it was a more favorable model. But you have both resolutions in place. That's how the JPA was validated. Should any changes happen down the road, whether it's through consumer demand or preferences, you already have it there. There's no need to come back and approve resolutions again. Any questions?
Any questions from the public? Comments? Bring it back to the council for recommendation and/or approval.
Motion that we approve item 6.3.
I second it.
We're motion to approve item 6.3, all three resolutions, and corresponding joint exercise of power agreements.
Councilmembers Fossey?
Yes.
Robert Martinez?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep these brief. Wanted to recognize Planning Commissioner Joan Stewart, who made a comment, I guess, at a meeting to our Public Works Superintendent, who followed up with Sue about the Riverbank signage on Patterson Road at the fountain needed to be cleaned and painted. Public Works and Parks crews got out there, did it. It looks really nice. We appreciate that kind of feedback. It's not offensive to us at all. Sometimes we miss things, like everybody, so we appreciate that. And wanted to send a thank you to her and to the staff for putting that together. Sue, Parks and Rec Director, was going to share just a couple of summer rec items that were a very busy calendar season going on right now.
Members of the council, our programs are going really well. Our camps are filling up with waiting lists. Our swim team has a record number of 96 swimmers. So just to quickly let you know, things are going really well. And then our first movie in the park is going to be June 24th at Jacob Myers Park. One other thing that you might be interested in is I've been taking the survey of the people coming to Jacob Myers Park, and there's about 80%, a lot higher than I thought, that are not from Riverbank. So we can use those numbers and that information as we talk further about fees and things like that in the future.
Are they from, are you getting Stanislaus County residents?
Bay Area, Stockton, yeah, a lot of Stanislaus County.
So that's a regional park. It should be considered under the PFFs for regional parks?
Anyway, we are just getting those statistics, so we'll be able to put a full report together later.
Thank you.
So how are things going down at Jacob Myers Park this summer, you know?
The dynamics are a little different, because the river is so high. So a lot of people are turning around, because they're looking for beach. I haven't had any problems at River Cove, but that's probably gonna come. I heard the river dropped about five feet today. So I'm not sure what that was all about, because I didn't know that was gonna happen. But the dynamics are different, but it's going smooth. We're using the back parking lot. And the problem up at the top has pretty much been solved with people parking up top. So far, so good.
Mayor, finally, next meeting, Marcella will be bringing forward an item to brief council on the implementation of the monthly billing for utility billing. And she's done, her and Anna have done a really, excuse me, her and Anna, our new accounting manager, have done an excellent job sort of analyzing all the facets of that. So we'll be bringing that forward to the next council meeting. That's all we have this evening.
And the budget, too.
Yes, and also the provisional budget, which is spending quite a bit of time on.
Right, for the council, Councilmember Fossey?
I just would like to comment on motorcycles and bicycles. We're in summer. People are riding them a lot, so be aware on the roads. But also, I have seen a couple of times with motorcycles, I know it's fun to drive fast, but it's not fun to drive fast on our city roads, so please observe the speed limit, and don't try to pass everybody, which I've had to meet twice. So please be respectful of our laws, and have fun riding, and staying safe.
Councilmember Campbell?
Just to add to what Councilmember Fossey said, school's out, so there are a lot more children running around, so watch for them while you're driving. Likewise, the local Farmers Market, or whatever you're calling it, is in session on Friday evenings. And the Historical Society has the pleasure of hosting Herb Henry, who's a very prominent gospel singer. He has donated his time for a fundraiser for them on June the, the last Friday of the month, June 29th, I believe it is. And you can get tickets for it if you'd like to go to it. It's gonna be at the Community Center between seven and, or it starts at seven. And you can get the tickets at City Hall from the Historical Society website, or I believe it'll be at Soderbergh Bryant's Market. And if you call me, I can get them for you, too.
Is it the 29th? That's a Thursday.
That's the 30th.
30th, which is competing with Farmers Market.
Actually, they're not having it that night.
Very good, very good, very respectful. Councilmember Robert Martinez?
I appreciated the public comment tonight. We, it's very difficult with some decisions that we have to make. And I just enjoy getting a different opinion, a different view on how people look at how we're moving forward as a city. You know, with some of these decisions, you can't please everybody, but we try to make decisions that are good for the city as a whole as we move forward. And let's see, I attended the disaster council meeting, and I toured the site for Stanislaus County. And the 911 call center was very interesting. You'd be surprised where those calls go and how they react to your calls. I also attended the Community Policy Committee meeting in Sacramento. And just to let you know that we are in support of a park bond that will provide an equitable amount of funding for each of our cities in the state. Senior vouchers for fruits and vegetables will be given out to our senior citizens this Friday, the 16th, and starting at 5:30. And we will be distributing those vouchers at the teen center. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just have a couple of things. As the, we have a forecast of temperatures getting very high. I want to make a couple of reminders to keep an eye out for your neighbors and pets that are out. Also, the rivers are still full and very cold. And I wanted to remind folks that the fire department does have a free life jacket program. You can go pick up life jackets there before you head down to the river. June 24th, the downtown businesses are trying to have an open house, block party kind of thing, come down, June 24th from 6:00 to 9:00. We have a lot of new businesses going in, if you haven't been down here and checking things out. So it might be a fun time to just kind of come down, something very casual. Just come down and say hi to some of the new businesses that have opened up, and some of the old ones that are out there. 6:00 to 9:00 on June 24th, Saturday. I am very excited about this PACE and HERO program. As of the last two mornings, I've had to take a cold shower. We're having some definite hot water heater issues. And I have it on my screen here. They take care of hot water stuff, so I'm very excited. I will be contacting them tomorrow. And what an awesome opportunity for our city to have that available to residents. I will be taking full advantage of it. And hopefully, as he said, rather quickly, we can get something done.
Thank you. I appreciate the responsiveness of the staff. I've been asked to check into things, and within 30 minutes, I get a call back that the staff is already on it. So thank the staff on the way that you're responsive, even on a Sunday morning. I think it was a Sunday morning?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. They kind of blend together. But no, it's refreshing the amount of responsiveness that they have. Although this morning at 5:00, there was four trucks laden with rocks coming from the sand and gravel, going down Oakdale Road. One of the things that we're not getting are impact fees from the county for uses from a county business going through our streets. They were double-trailored trucks. So right then and there, that was, what, 16? No, 12, you know, trailers and trucks going through the city. And, you know, that's tearing up our roads. So I'm not gonna say we want to limit, which we do not. But we want to take a look at talking with the county on, they collect our impact fees. I'd like to start having them pay their impact fees. The parks that you're talking about, the funding, is, there's two bills out there. They're probably gonna merge. What she's talking about, Councilmember Robert Martinez, is a minimum of $125,000 for Riverbank's parks, upwards to $200,000, depending on what bill is accepted. So that is something that we could look into for Jacob Myers Park and some of the other park upgrades that we want to do, some of the maintenance that has to be gone. And there's no guidance on spending. However, there is additional funding available for urban forestry. So that may be something to take a look at, the bills. You know what the bills are? One's a Senate Bill, SB 5, and AB... So those are merging? Oops, I gotta take a pill. Sorry, guys. Okay, the, anyway, it's gonna be a lot of good stuff that can come out of it. It's a bond, and we're gonna have to pay for it, but that's gonna be over the course of whatever bond that they do. But it would be beneficial to our parks, water, water resources. And lastly, I want to talk about stormwater. We have few districts that the city's covered in stormwater. The state is coming up with a proposal that puts stormwater in the same category as wastewater. It has been in the past. It was identified as wastewater. And if you take a look at the definition of wastewater, it is. As it comes off of whether it's treated vegetation or from oils and roads, it now becomes a wastewater. So by changing of that, that should have not only just the one landscape lighting district and stormwater district that we talked about today. The whole city could be in a stormwater district. And it could be paid for, the collection. Why is that important? By 2018, we have to start implementing prevention of any water going into the river from the city. I don't know how that's gonna be possible, but we're gonna have to start that. I believe it's 2022, that has to be completed. And if we're not, we're in violation of $25,000 per pollutant per day. So we have to come up with a plan, a policy, payment, and execution soon. Water's becoming a big issue with the state. And this is, I believe, federal mandated for MS4. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, not just for, you know, the near future. With that, we will adjourn to closed session. Prior to the adjourn to closed session, the public will have five minutes to comment on the closed session item set prior to the City Council LRA Board recessions to closed session. Item 8.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Pursuant to Government Code 5495-7.6, Agency Representative Sean Scully, City Manager, Employees Organization Riverbank Miscellaneous, Employees Riverbank Mid-Management Bargaining Unit. Is there any public comment? CNN will adjourn to closed session. We're resumed from closed session. Item nine, report from closed session, item 9.1, report on closed session of item 8.1, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Direction has been provided to staff. With that, we adjourn.
Good meeting.